Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, September 4th. Today it is 7:00 PM. And with us tonight, we have Tim Hagler, Judy Conroy, Drew Delaney, Dave Anderson, I'm John Lee, Mark Major, and we have Lauren Mikowski, Administrative Secretary, and Patrick Shainz for the ZBA in Community Development. First case we have is case number 24-15. Is the applicant here tonight?
One A Auto Sales.
What's that?
The used car license?
Yes.
Yes.
Not for the license for the parking at the... Okay. If you want to just come up, I'll read the... Yep, and just wait one second. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the town of Walpole will hold a public hearing in the select board meeting room of the town hall on Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 PM on the application of Dewey L. Dewey, case number 24-15, with respective property located at 1449 Main Street, Walpole, within the business zoning district. Application is for modification of the conditions of an approval of a previously issued special permit, decision ZBA case number 0614 under section 5B14E of the Walpole zoning bylaws. The modification seeks to amend conditions 1 and 4 in order to allow 24 parking spaces for automobile storage instead of the previously approved 16 spaces. All those are invited and encouraged to review the plans prior to the public meeting. So we have a site plan. We have comments from the Board of Health, and the Board of Health has no comments at this time. Planning Board has no comments at this time. From the Police Department, detached plans have been reviewed for any impact on public safety and quality of life. The Walpole Police Department does not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic in this case filed with the ZBA. The Fire Department has no comments at this time. If you want, the way we do this is we probably already reviewed the plans as a board on our own, but if you want to walk us through the plans which you're proposing to do to increase the parking at your location.
So currently, where I have...
Excuse me. Just identify yourself for the record.
Okay. Sorry. My name is Dewey L. Dewey. I'm the owner of 1A Auto Sales, and I'm also the owner of the property 1449 Main Street. And all I'm looking to do is increase my license capacity by another... for additional A-car storage. Primarily, it's going to be in the spots 26 through 33, which is currently dirt. I mean, it's grass. And all I'm going to do is basically place crushed stone or gravel. The zone... That territory abuts... It's a business zone, and it abuts a business zone, so for the zoning. And the vehicles that I'm choosing are electric vehicles, so there's no motor oil. There's no... There's nothing toxic that could leak out. And all I'm looking for is eight spots because I get a lot of out-of-state deals, and a lot of times I'm just waiting for transporters to come pick up the vehicles. So I have... On the pipeline, a lot of times I have seven, eight cars that are... I'm just... They're sitting in my lot and taking up space, where I just don't want to go rent storage down the street when I could just park them, just park them in the back. I've already spoken to my neighbors, and, you know, one of the neighbor directly behind me just had a concern about if I touch anything with the trees. I'm not going to touch anything with the roots of the trees. All I'm doing is putting like recycled asphalt or crushed stone, whatever your recommendations are, and that's it. Just parking, eight cars.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. And so as we look at this, really, it's parking spot number 26 to 33. Those are the only ones being added. Everything else is...
Existing.
Is existing and already approved. Okay. Do any board members have any questions or comments on this? Judy?
John, I can't see you down there.
How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good.
Dave, you're in the way.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. What... Mr. Advocate, person, what class license do you have now to sell?
It's a Class 2.
Class 2? Okay. Do you have a facility for repair when you sell the vehicles?
I outsource everything. We don't do repairs on premise. We have... Sometimes I do the gas station that's right next door, does our repairs, and then for larger jobs, we have a shop that we use in Norwood. But there's no... Absolutely no repairs that happen on premise.
Okay. Can you tell me right now how many cars you have on your property?
16.
16?
Believe so.
Okay.
For sale?
For sale.
Yeah, for sale. I may have... So I have a storage facility. I have a storage... I rent space from somebody down the street, and I have... Over there, I have 20 cars stored there. It's fenced in. It's completely off... Completely off. I'm using that for storage currently.
Okay. So when I was there today, spaces 10, 11, and 12, 10, 11, 12, and 13 were occupied. There appeared to be four cars, like a fake space before 14, 15, and 16, so there were eight cars right there.
Mm-hmm.
And across the back, there was at least 12 cars across your back where you want to do the tandem parking.
In the back row right now, there's currently... I think there's 11 cars. There's... You can't fit 12 cars there.
Okay.
You're talking about the row that's in front of 26?
Seven... Yeah, 17 to 25.
So there's 11 cars there. You cannot fit anything more than that.
Okay. You also had vehicles... I don't know if any of you got... You all went, but you also had vehicles perpendicular, at least two or three, in the, I would call, travel lane.
The travel lane.
Perpendicular to the existing spaces. So those are extra. Okay. I noticed that you look like you're adding a handicap space over to the left.
Yes. Well, no, there is a handicap space.
There is one there?
Yes.
How many tenant spaces do you currently have?
There's one, two... There's five spaces, I believe. One... There's three... I'm sorry. There's four spaces.
Okay.
And that's on the other side of the building.
Correct. Okay. You have a handicap space. Are you handicapped accessible?
I'm sorry?
You have a handicap space.
Yes.
Is your building handicapped accessible?
Not that I know of. I mean, it's handicapped accessible, so do I have a ramp or something?
A ramp?
Stairs.
You have...
I only have stairs. All I have currently is stairs. So I don't have a ramp.
Okay. All right. I noticed that some of the vehicles in space 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 were encroaching upon the town sidewalk.
Okay.
So the front ends up to the... Beyond the wheels forward were...
So I can back them up a few feet?
Back them up?
Yes.
Does that change your travel lanes at all?
It does not.
And what do you consider a buffer between the businesses?
There's no rule for buffer. So the buffer... I was looking up the rules, and there's a 26-foot buffer requirement when it's going from B to RB. And with this, and that's based off of the zoning line, not the building. And since we're... Since this right here doesn't involve any structure, because I'm not parking cars near the building. I'm parking cars in an open lot. The buildings, the buffer there is 26 feet, and we have a 40-foot setback from there.
Okay. And let's see.
I've worked this plan with... Closely with James Crowley, with his advice and advisement. And I've listened to every piece of information. And we actually... I went back, and if you look at my plot plan, that I've... We've got this down, that we've had revision about four times already. So every month, I'd go, and I'd bring it back to get his advice and go back and forth between my surveyor and Jim.
Okay. But I'm looking at the prior decision that was back in May 28, 2014, under another applicant, and it does stay with the property. And they allowed 16 on the property.
Okay.
So there was a reason why they allowed 16, not more than 16 at the time.
At the time, he only applied for 16. That was John. He only applied it because he wasn't looking for a full-time deal. He owned... He was the guy who ran the gas station next door, and this was more of a hobby for him.
Okay. And just one more question for now. Do you have plans to go before the planning board for site plan review on this? Is that required?
So it'd be up to the building commissioner to discuss that with the applicant. So what's before the board is just a modification of their special permit. If he does need to go for site plan review, that would have to be after this process. But that's not up for really us to determine. That's...
Okay. No, I was just questioning because there was a decision based on...
I agree.
I read... I have the site plan decision from the planning board, which was delivered at the same time as this. However, I couldn't find a endorsed plan, which I would like to compare what that plan was to what you're proposing. And I feel it's a... This is a big ask to increase the size, especially for the size of the property, from what I saw today. It's a big ask. Thank you. I'm all set for now, John.
So one thing, as I looked at this, to move vehicles into lots 26 to 33, these are the ones that you're proposing. Do you have a plan in front of you? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So to move vehicles into those areas, would you be driving on the grass behind those, or are they the only way to access them?
Just stacking.
Okay. Yeah, tandem park. I think that's the term you used. So, okay. Because that would be a condition that I'd want to put in there so that we're not getting too close to the residential property over on 1 Marion, Marion Street, or 23 Marion.
Exactly.
So that... And I understand what you were saying, that these cars get parked, and they'll sit there until you need to move them. It does raise a question where you have nine spots, but you just said you have 11 vehicles put in there. So I'm talking about between 17 and 25. So I guess the question I have is, how do you make sure that when we give... If you get the additional parking, that you're not putting even more cars on it, that you're going to not be putting... Well, you had nine spots, and now you have 11 cars. You'll have eight more spots. How do you solve that?
That's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking, so I don't have the violation. So I have the space to do it, and then so I can legally park on the grass. There's a reason why I don't do it now, because, you know, I sometimes I do take some extra space. And the zoning for the cars that you guys are giving, which is the parking spots are nine by 18.5, that's catered to like F-150s, F-250s. The stuff I'm selling are a lot smaller. They're Tesla Model 3s, Tesla Model Ss, small sedans. Compact mid-sized sedans are mostly the stuff that I sell. Occasionally, I might get a pickup truck like a F-150 Lightning. That's the stuff that the zoning is really meant for. And sometimes, yeah, I stuff... I'll fit an extra car to in the lanes, because it's only the employees that pull the cars in and out.
Anybody else have questions?
Actually, I have a question. So on the plot plan, you have an enclosed dumpster, and then there's a note saying dumpster optional location. Are you proposing to have the dumpster there, or do you need a dumpster?
I can move... Yes. That's...
I just didn't know how you'd be able to access that.
That would be right on spot 17. So, hold on one second. So for the dumpster, I mean, it's right on spot 17. I could keep it right at the curb, so when the trash truck wants to come in, they come in, spot 17 is... They... I can move the car from spot 17, they can just take it out.
Yeah. I mean, that's just... I guess my kind of concern. Do you need dumpsters?
I don't.
You propose to have a dumpster? So that's just why the note's kind of ambiguous, is saying optional dumpster location. I don't know if that's something that we need, or if that's what you want to have.
I don't. I don't.
Just because it seems like it'd be kind of difficult to access that.
Yeah, but it's... I'm just trying to follow. So if there's any compliance, and you want me to put a dumpster there, I don't mind. I'll put one there.
It's up to your decision as a business owner. I mean, that's... However you handle trash for your tenants in the business, that's between you. That was just my only observation.
Does that answer...
Yeah, I mean...
Is there a concern about that?
Only just in terms of access. Like if you have the...
Meaning because 17 is blocking it?
Yeah, 17's blocking it if you have a full lot at the time, and if you want to use a dumpster, it does... I don't imagine that trucks are going to be driving on the grass. It's probably going to need to access it through either lot 17 or 18. But that's just an observation. It's up to...
Right now, we're just using the gas station next door. We're just... I'm kind of sharing the... His dumpster.
Okay.
And if, I mean, if need be, if I need to get something, I don't mind just getting regular, like curbside pickup.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of your decision, as well as what the...
Yep.
...requires for trash pickup, but...
The tenants have regular trash pickup, so they pull it out to the curb.
Okay.
Okay. Tim, you know a lot about this topic. Do you have any questions or comments?
Car dealers need cars on their lot to sell, so I totally understand where he's coming from. Yeah. Now, correct me. This isn't a variance he's looking for. It's a modification to a special permit that he is existing with the property. So the bar probably isn't as high as a variance, would you say?
That is true.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. I agree with Tim's. I have no problem with the additional cars. I'm sure you jam a bunch in and try to stick to the 16 as best as you can, and I think that that's understandable, that the more cars you can have, the better business you can provide for potential clients. You mentioned, do you have cars picked up, though, from a car trailer? Is that what... You said something about that?
No, I have cars. I have cars that get picked up or dropped off.
From this facility?
No, no. They either get dropped off at the industrial park, or they get dropped off at a repair shop in Norwood.
Okay. So if we did... Were out in favor of this, we could add that condition, that there was no car shipments coming to this facility? Because right now, there's no condition mentioning that.
Yes. So do you understand... Is your concern a...
Well, my concern is if you have a storage of 33 vehicles on your property, you have nowhere to bring a truck in and transport them from there.
The cars... So sometimes I get stuff that on 16 cars, on the big trailers.
Right.
There's no way they can pull up unless they block 1A, which...
That's where I'm going with my comment.
Yeah. So on a Friday afternoon, when a transporter does that, I've realized that that's not what I want. So what I do is I usually have them unload at the Walpole Industrial Park, or they unload at Bristol Square across the street, or Pleasant Street in Norwood, which is my father's shop.
Okay.
And then we just... We send two of our guys to go pick it up.
And then you mentioned something about electrical vehicles. Are you talking about putting any sort of charges in here?
I've already... I already have. I already have.
You already have some of them?
Just a 240 charger.
Okay. Close to the proximity of the building, you know?
It's on my building.
Okay. And then, sorry, the last thing was, the proximity you have from the back of the vehicles to the property line is 16 feet plus or minus. If that's something that we kind of conditioned as far as... I don't want to say, "Go ahead and park here." Next thing you know, your bumper's on the property line. And I get it, it's not the structure, but that... One of the conditions that you're not even asking to be amended is condition number two, which is that there is a maintained buffer between businesses and abutting residences respectively as required by the zoning bylaw. And I get it, you're following the letter of the law with the structure, but as a person who has feels for this person who you've already talked to and said is okay with it, but to my knowledge isn't here...
They were outside. They were outside, and I spoke to them.
Oh, okay.
And I asked them if they have any questions, and they told me the only concern they had was if I'm going to dig to the ground and damage any of the trees. I said, "I'm not doing any digging. All I'm doing is putting like... Putting recycled asphalt, crushed stone. I'm not paving. I'm already almost at the maximum that I can pave, so I cannot add any additional pavement." And I told them, "I'm not going to touch any of the trees. That's not what I'm looking for."
I guess my only thing is when we normally approve a plan, we talk about, you know, we meant, you know, in our decision, mention whatever the plan is. Where you have 16 feet plus or minus, that kind of leaves a large window of what you interpret as minus, and we interpret as plus, or... So if we kind of condition something like, "Hey, you're going to hold it to 16 feet off that property line," as shown on the plans.
I will do it.
Something like that doesn't ruin your plan here? Okay.
All... The only thing I'm... Just one row, one row in the back. It's literally the first row, right where it touches the concrete, I mean, the pavement. I'm not going back. I'm not going to stuff two other rows of cars.
Right.
I've got neighbors. I've, you know, I don't want... I don't want to make anybody mad, and it's residential. I have two tenants that live in that building. I have tenants that live all around, and I've... I don't want... I don't have... I don't want any bad vibe from anyone.
No, I understand. But again, the rule in that will... Is for the property. So, you know, we've got to kind of take into concern everything that encompasses that. So I understand. Thank you for answering those questions. So ahead.
John, I had another question.
Yes.
Do you have your own dealer plates, or do you work off of somebody else's?
I have my own.
You have your own. Assigned to the property?
Yes, of course.
I just had a couple more questions. In looking at the planning board decision, understand the conditions, which I would think we would want to consider. Number six is, "All parking spaces, aisles, driveways, loading spaces, and fire lanes shall be clearly marked and delineated." I don't... On this particular plan, I know it's not site planned, but where are the fire... Where would there be fire lanes on your proposed plan? I have a concern with electric vehicles. I have a concern with electric vehicle fires and what I know of them, and I also have a concern that we don't have any comments from the Fire Department. Thank you.
So we did ask for comments from the Fire Department, and we didn't get comments from the Fire Department.
Then I would ask...
I read that.
I would ask... So they have no comment?
Yes, that was...
So they reviewed this and have no comment?
Yeah, just... I already read it. From the Fire Department, Alan Hoover, on August 15th, said, "No comments at this time." I read that earlier.
I understand that you read that earlier. He said, "At this time," so he's... That's it?
Well, that's...
Okay. Well, I have a concern as a board member to have this density of electric vehicles without any kind of fire lane.
So can I say something?
Mm-hmm.
Statistically, electric vehicles catch fire 10% of what a gas vehicle would. So you hear about it all over the news, and when they catch fire, yes, it takes a lot of water to put them out.
Excuse me.
But for... Let's just say for every 100 fires, there... For every 100 fires, 10 of them will be EV. 90 would be gas. So anything can catch on fire, but the odds of an electric vehicle are a lot less.
Okay. Could you just repeat your storage facility down at the industrial park? How many vehicles are you able to store there?
Twenty vehicles.
How many?
Twenty vehicles.
Twenty. And that's in some kind of approved situation down there?
It's just... It's commercial property. It's off-site storage.
Off-site storage, okay. For 20.
It's fenced in. Nobody can see anything. And it's right at the Northeast Broncos, right across the street from Kenny Jones.
Oh. Okay. Interesting. And do you have specific hours of operation being nice to your neighbors and your tenants?
Monday through Friday, 9 to 6. Saturday from 10 to 2. Closed on Sunday.
Okay. Thank you.
So from our discussions, this is what I wrote down for a couple of conditions that I think we would want to have if we approved this. Parking spaces 26 to 33 only have access through... Only have access by way of the parking spaces in the front, and I have in parentheses, tandem parking. Parking spaces 26 to 33 will have gravel or other permeable material, and no vehicles will be delivered on... By truck to the site. If somebody wants to word that a little better. But the idea is that we're not going to have a car carrier showing up parking either on... You know, 1A or... Is it William Street? Yeah, William Street right there.
Yes, sir.
So does anybody have other conditions that they'd want to discuss? Judy?
I'd like to put in his stated hours of operation.
Okay.
He said Monday through Friday, 9 to 6.
Yes.
And Saturday, 10 to 2, enclosed on Sunday.
Yep.
The only other one that I heard was from Drew, 16 feet plus or minus as a condition.
From the back, property line. Yep. So no vehicles within 16 feet of the property line? I didn't get the Saturday oper... What's the Saturday?
10.
10 to 2.
10 to 2. Okay.
John, one last thing. It came up in the conversation. We talked about no car carriers, so they're blocking 1A or the neighbors. Can we go as far as to say no drop-offs at Bristol Square? Because I mean, that's not fair to those neighbors.
I don't know if he has an agreement with the property owners at Bristol Square.
I don't, but I will stop it. I'll just... I'll have everything either dropped off at the industrial park, or I'll have it dropped off at our shop in Norwood.
I think it... My ears went up when I heard that.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's really...
Outside of our...
That's outside of our area. Yes.
And I mentioned the cars that are facing 1A that seem to encroach upon the brand-new sidewalks there where people walk.
I'll push them off the sidewalk.
I don't know if you put those cement berm things, or I don't know what they're called.
Ballards. I'll push them back, so they're not going over the curb. Your concern is going over the curb.
Yeah, they're over the curb.
So I'll push them back. I'll push them back, so their nose is at least a foot behind the curb.
Okay.
That's an enforcement issue. So, I mean, it's... And nobody should be parking in the town right away, sidewalks.
Sorry, is that to be included as a condition?
It's not. I mean, it's... Right.
I will make sure that tomorrow, every car will be moved. I'll push it back. So that's a concern. I apologize, and I will move it back.
Anybody have anything else? Okay. So we've got... Do you want to read back the conditions, just briefly on the conditions?
Parking spaces 26 to 33 only access by way of spaces in front, which will be tandem parking. Spaces 26 to 33 will have crushed gravel or another permeable material. No cars to be delivered by truck on site. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, closed on Sunday. And there shall be no cars within 16 feet plus or minus of the property line.
And it is a corner lot. I just want to make sure.
It is a corner lot.
Just want to make sure that it's clear that that's the rear. Okay.
I do have one more question. The two remaining conditions from the previous still stand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
The number would need to be changed.
What's that?
They would need to be added to this.
They would need to go from 16 to 24. So conditions 1 and 4, that's what he's asking for, need to be amended to include the eight additional spaces. So where it says 16, we change that to 24.
Right.
Yeah, that's how we would have...
Yeah, that's how we would have done those conditions.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have that as, so, it would be a condition?
Well, he's looking to amend those conditions of his previously issued special permit, so, within our decision, we'd have to reference those conditions as being amended from 16 to 24.
Okay. And you, we've got that, you can do that, okay. Okay. Nobody from the public to speak on this? Your neighbors are all good, you said? You just talked to your neighbors? Okay. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Voting on this will be the regular members, Judy, Drew, Dave, me, and, have you been appointed yet?
No.
And our associate, Mark. Okay. At this time, do you want to close the hearing? I don't think, does anybody have any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, at the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
So, moved.
Moved by Drew.
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? That's the first thing we have to do. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstained. So carried. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the request to, for modification of the special permit under, for conditions 1 and 4, to increase the parking spots from 16 to 24, with the conditions that we've discussed, which are tandem parking, permeable material, delivery at site, hours of operation, and nothing within 16 feet of the back property line?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Drew, second by Mark. Any further discussion on that? Okay. That's the motion before us. Any, it's been seconded, any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Abstained? So carried. Motion is all one. Okay. You know how it works, it'll be about, we have 20 days to get the decision, but it might happen soon enough.
14.
14. Well, for a special permit.
It's a 20-day appeal period.
20-day appeal period.
So, I come back, I come back after.
So, we'll record the decision, we'll notify you when it's recorded, and then there's a 20-day appeal period. After that, you can take your decision, and you have to record it, the town, Norfolk County. Norfolk County.
You've been working with the building inspector on this, right?
Yeah, he's been walking me every step of the way, so, thank you so much.
Hey, good luck.
Thank you. Well, I need to update, after this happens, I'm going to have to update the, a new site plan with, like, the MyLars.
I would talk to Jim about this, so, like you said, if you need to have site plan reviewed from the planning board, that, you have to have that conversation with Jim Crowley.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next case we have tonight is for 292 North Street. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, Town of Walpole, will hold a public hearing in the select board meeting room of the Walpolt Town Hall on Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 p.m. on an application from Daniel Kiefer, case number 24-16, with respect to property located at 292 North Street, within the business, I'm sorry, within the residence B zoning district. Application is for variance under section 6B1, scheduled for dimensional regulations for relief to the minimum side yard setback within the residence B zoning district. The applicant seeks to construct a single-car garage addition that is within 5.7 feet of the side yard boundary on a lot lacking frontage and area. All are invited and encouraged to review the plans prior to the public hearing. Okay. So, we have a few comments, I'm sure.
Can you put them up?
Yeah, come on, yeah, you can. I'm going to just read the comments that we have from other boards. Board of Health has no comments. From the fire, from the police department, Luke Parlon, said, "The attached plans have been reviewed for any impact on public safety and quality of life. The Walpole Police Department does not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic in this case filed with the ZBA." The fire department has no comments at this time, and that's all we have. Okay. So, we have the plans in front of us. If you want, would you walk us through what you're proposing to do and the relief that you're asking for?
Hi. So, we're looking to put an addition on the side of our house, the right side, if you're looking at it, we'd like to do a single-car garage with a room above it, and when we initially bought our property in 2020, first-time homebuyers didn't know it was a non-conforming lot, so, to us, looks like a whole bunch of space if we wanted to do something like this. Unfortunately, there's not, so we're looking for relief for a, or a variance that would allow us to build this garage within the, I think it's from 10 feet to 5.7.
Okay. So, the variance is hard to get. Did people explain that to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, yeah.
So, for variance, basically what you're doing is, you're going against what everybody else in town has agreed is what, how things should be built. So, you have to explain why, why you need the variance.
So, our lot size right now, I think we're lacking, or we're under 50% or over 50%, whatever that is, I think it's required 20,000, we have less than 10, less than 10,000. So, automatically, right there, that puts us in a non-conforming situation, so, with the lot size and then the, the lack of frontage. Given that our, our lot was grandfathered in, I don't think that other people that would be going for this type of variance would be in that similar situation. If they were, then, you know, we would hope that it could be amended. I don't know if I'm explaining that clearly, sorry, I'm new.
I think she, so, yeah, I see that it's in the residence B requirement for, for lot areas, 20,000 square feet, there's 9,673, the requirement for frontage is 125, and there's only 80. There's a reference in the plan about, where is it? Section 9 point.
Probably.
Where is it? Oh, sorry, 69C. Because the lot is less frontage than required, the side yard setbacks are reduced from what was, I believe.
15.
15 to 10. So, that's why the request is from 10 to 5.7.
And the one other thing to note is that our property is not abutting a neighbor's house. The house is set super far behind us, it's only abutting a driveway, so there's, there's a lot of extra, extra room on that side.
So, one of, one of the conditions that we look at for variances is, you know, hardship, right? Where there's really no other possible way to do this, or do what you want to do, which it sounds like is get more space and potentially a garage.
Yeah.
So, I guess, one of the questions I usually ask is, do you have a plan B if this doesn't get approved?
Um, no, we don't. We've, we've considered it, we really want this, but unfortunately, if we were to go to the other side, which I, we would have to rearrange our whole house, pretty much.
Move the driveway.
Yeah, we'd have to move our entire driveway, dig up our yard, yeah.
Okay, just.
Yeah.
So, clearly, you've, you've thought through it and have gone through multiple options to get through this. Okay.
Anybody else? Nobody? Okay.
Well, John.
Yeah.
I'm still thinking, actually, thinking about this a lot, in, in, as we already said, a variance is, is hard, and gone through many variances, requests for overhangs over front doors even. That is usually not successful, that's all I have to say. I think you probably knew that, maybe, or explained that going in.
We, we were told that this would be hard to get, we were told that there might be more of a chance for us, given our situation with the lot size and the frontage, since it's not just a standard lot that we're asking to extend on, so we, we wanted to give it a try.
The pre-existing, maybe a clarification for Patrick here. With pre-existing non-conforming, is there a level of this that could bring it to a special permit instead of a variance? Meaning if it was smaller, or shorter, or less?
No.
No.
I mean, because, I mean, it.
It's already in.
The driveway being on that side, there's already, I mean.
It's in the setback.
Yeah, and in terms of the size of a garage.
So, hold on. Yes, there would be a way, and that would be if the garage was put back where the patio is located, something like that. Because then it wouldn't, as long as it's not within, I, I don't see the envelope, the building envelope, laid out here. But, you know, I think that that's, I think it's quick to say that there's, you know, no other place a garage could, could go.
Could go.
I mean, we don't know the measurements. I mean, it looks like the lot kind of, I mean, the house is closer to the side yard right there, so it could be even.
So, our, our lot, it, it like angles in.
Yeah.
So, and I apologize, I'm probably going to mess this up, but there was something with fire code, too, like, if we were, if we were to do it anywhere else, it would be, like, extremely expensive, the way that it curves in, we would need to fireproof, like, the whole side of our house, that's actually why the dimensions are the way that they are for this proposed addition, so that we could avoid that, too, and not spend a bunch of money.
And are you planning to have something on top of the garage as well?
A room on top, yeah.
Living, living space there as well? Okay.
I, I have a comment, or, yeah, I guess a comment, more than a question. I, I mean, I look at it and I see, even if they tried to put it on, and I'm not designing their project, I'm not anything, I'm just thinking about it, from a realistic standpoint, they would need a variance no matter where they put it, so I, I don't have a problem with the variance in this particular case. And, and they're already, if I'm understanding this, you're already within the setback because you're at 10 feet off the side yard? Is the way I read this? It's kind of hard to read that number, but.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 15, right?
So, it's supposed to be 15, but Walpole has this unusual bylaw that says if you have a small, undersized frontage, that you can reduce your, you know, the setback, so, they're already, you know, we already recognize that this would be a hard, a hardship, and the bylaws would allow them to go from 15 feet to 10 feet, and now that, what they're doing is they're asking for addition, you know, additional relief on top of that. Anybody else? I see people, are you checking dimensional setbacks?
Yeah.
I was wondering how this, just, I was wondering how this lot got created.
All right.
Yeah, what?
I, it's unusual.
Yeah, and it was created way back before the town had, had zoning. It was cut out of the lot, the large lot behind you with that, so, it was done probably in the, in the 1950s, before there was zoning, and it's always been a small lot, the, you know, a nice house on it, and now you're trying to expand the house, so.
And it's only going to be the 5'7" at the very back of the garage, right? Because it looks like it's.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
Because if you're going just proportionate to the normal setback and saying you've got half as much square footage to work with, then if you were to cut the setbacks in half, you'd be at 7, which is pretty close to 5'7" at its shortest point.
So, what, I just, one of the things I, I think that I always look at is, with a variance, my concern sometimes is, if we grant a variance, another neighbor could come in with a situation asking for relief of, of something similar, and we could deny it, because that's what a zoning board does, they sit in judgment, but it, it makes it eas, I'd have concerns about defending an appeal on, on something like that.
Well, I thought of that, and I also thought that there was a gentleman who built an overhang on a second floor, who came in after the fact, and we granted that, and I feel like these people are at least doing their due diligence to get out in front of it, and understanding of their situation, I, I don't see an issue with it personally. But I agree with you, I mean, I think in a different scenario, we'd have to certainly look at past instances where we've approved or denied a case like that.
And I agree, you certainly don't want to set and press it anywhere, having continually pushed, right?
There's, there's that, but it also comes down to, a, a variance requires a free-pronged approach. There's, there's a hardship that is not created by the applicant, that there's something about the geology or the geography, or.
Geography.
Something with the, the property, including, we had one where the sewer line connected to the house, where, and we granted relief for that, the way this sewer line was connected, because that was something that they, they couldn't, you know, change, or couldn't realistically change. And then finally, the other one is, it's not trying to get around the existing zoning, that, you know, that's what the townspeople have said, we don't want things this close to a property line, so, to grant relief, that is, that's why it's so difficult to get a variance, on those, yeah, meeting those three points.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think that's why we want to stress that, that where we're going next to is a long driveway, so there's, it's not near a house, it's not near a real plot plan, so I think we just want to stress that it's not going to affect how they live.
Has any of your neighbors actually provided any of that feedback to you, or?
Yeah, so.
Because they get notified every time.
Yep, so, one neighbor's that we're really close with, and that's why we're doing, we love the neighborhood, we love Walpole, he said, "I would love for you guys to do that, because we want you to stay." So, he said, "It's not going to cause anything to him," so he wants, wants it to get approved and wants us to stay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I, may I make a suggestion? I, I know the house, because there was a horse corral behind the original house that was there, that was knocked down when the Todd family bought the lot and built the house way out back, so that's the Todd family driveway, very familiar with it. I was going to bring this up at the last hearing, where. I was gonna bring this up at the last hearing, where the applicant said, "Oh yeah, my neighbors are okay with it. I would like to see some written documentation from your neighbors, to say they're okay with it." I don't, no, no.
That's not the way it's done, and here's why. The neighbors, everybody's had public notice with this. If they had some concerns, they could have sent a letter in, they could have, they could have provided them with the letter, but they didn't. And they didn't, they didn't come to the hearing. So, silences, you know, in this case, a form of, you know, if they're not, if they're not here, or they haven't submitted anything, tells me they're, it's not a big concern.
We're not, like, we just want extra storage. If you, like you said, our house was built however long ago that was, our basement, like, you can barely even stand up in, so the garage would give us extra storage, and would allow us to stay. I grew up in Walpole, I'd love to stay here. Putting the room on top gives us an office space, we both work from home, so it kind of does all the things that we want. We're not looking to do a whole, like, mega mansion, that some of the North Street houses are. Just, if we could accomplish this, it would be, yeah, it would allow us to stay.
John, I have a question. To the applicant, no idea, when you bought it, that this was a non-conforming lot, and that this could come up?
No, no, I mean, it was 2020, and it was like, there was lines out the doors with people giving offers, and we actually, we like pretty much waived everything that we could have, just to get the house, because we really wanted it, so. Yeah.
I don't know about that real estate agent. Not telling you, that's pretty bad.
I mean, maybe they did, but I guess, like, we couldn't, I couldn't say that from memory, yeah.
Yeah. Buying a house in the last five years, it's.
Yeah, it's a fight, yeah.
Yeah.
You're just putting money in.
We were definitely part of that.
Okay, board members have any other questions or comments? At this time, do you want to close the hearing?
Sure.
Okay, at the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? That's the first step, we do close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. And I should have clarified, voting on this will be, Tim, you want to vote on this one? Tim and the regular members that are here tonight. Okay. Does anybody have any conditions that they'd want for this? I don't think we've. Just a plan set reference.
I just have one.
Yeah.
That the garage is for the sole purpose of storing a vehicle, and that there would never be repairs done inside the garage.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And I have, I have a personal reason that goes back 40 years on that one. It's, no, why not?
It's.
It's a use?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
As they're repairing their own vehicle, it's a, it's a single-family home, they can, they can repair their own vehicle inside their home. Talking about like repairing other people's cars?
Repairing, or, I don't know, they might.
Well, no, because.
Develop a hobby for antique cars.
It's residential.
You can't dictate the interior of a single.
What?
You can't dictate the interior of a single-family home. So if they're gonna change their own oil, I mean, that's, they're right.
Yeah, and also, and also, how, there's that, but if they were, if, in the future, somebody runs, are you concerned about somebody running an automotive shop on?
No, but, yeah, no, not an automotive shop. But when you have something that's that close to the line, and yes, it's a driveway, but we've just now said, if it goes through, that that's a possibility for another garage and another applicant to come in and want to be, do the same thing. Have a garage. They could have a hobby restoring antique vehicles, and they're gonna be out there at different times, but they might not have a driveway next to them, they've got a line. So we're, we've now designated that line as being okay to be that close.
Each situation you need to look at differently. I think that's where we talk about the hardship of variance, it's soil safety photography, but each property is looked at differently. You don't set a precedent, just because you agreed to, if you, if you agree to allow the variance there. Each applicant that comes forward has their own unique situations, depending on the lot. Whether it's, you know, there's a boulder in the way, and they can't move the addition somewhere, or the lot's non-conforming, each situation needs to be looked at as its own independent case.
I mean, does, does anybody else want to support that addition on, as a condition? The big, the big hurdle here is a variance, and I, I, I've never, I don't usually see a condition on something like this.
Withdraw my recommendation.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the variance for 292 North Street, based on the plans submitted by the applicant, and revised on May 9th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Drew, second by Judy. All those in favor of granting the variance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed? Does that require a majority?
Yeah, I know, supermajority.
Supermajority, okay. So, did not pass, so.
Is there anything we can do? Change that?
Oh crap.
I think, anything you can do?
Yeah, like, like what's the process from here on out? We would just, we'd love to keep our house in Walpole, and, I don't know, there's another step, or it's just a done deal?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Typically, the subject comes up of allowing the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. And I think this is the first time I've sat here, that that option hasn't been discussed with the applicant.
Okay.
So, unless, I'm not sure procedurally, if there's any way to, for those opposed to reconsider.
What's that?
If they, if those opposed would reconsider.
Allowing.
The vote, and then explaining to the applicant, they may withdraw without prejudice. We've always had that conversation before a vote. Someone, one of us has always brought that up, and I just, I just think that that's fair.
Okay. So, so what's hap- You didn't get the, you didn't get the variance, and what Judy Conroy is talking about now is, we could have asked you before we took the vote, if you want to withdraw, which would mean you could then go back and modify your plans, or do something, you know, do something different. But, that's real, you know, that's the, I'll just say, offering somebody, giving them advice to, you know, withdraw, that's offering legal advice, which we really shouldn't be doing. So, I do know that we've often said, hey, it's, you do have the option to withdraw, but at this point, I'm trying to figure out how to unscrew this, you know?
I think we, I personally think we need to unscrew it, because I can't remember a time when we didn't give that option to an applicant, even though we were con- agreeing that it may pass. It's not, we're not offered advice, I'm sure they weren't even aware, maybe not. They're not here with an attorney, you don't need to be. But now they have, with the denial, they have to wait two years to come back with anything, unless it's substantially different. So I really, as a.
So I, I feel for the situation, so how do we, how do we resolve this?
Reconsideration of the vote to deny.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know the Robert's rules to do that, but.
So, it's just as you said, we can, I can ask for somebody to make a motion to reconsideration, the motion to deny, I'm sorry, reconsider the vote, and if we all want to, you know, revote, and, but we already closed the case too, that's the other thing.
Closed it and.
Yeah, closed it and voted. What?
I just said, unfortunately, it was closed and.
Yeah. I think we, we should, you know, procedurally, that, you know, we had a discussion, we voted, and that's the, that's the vote. You might not like it, but.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just, I, I'm looking at it from a fan's point of view, that's all. When that soapbox talk has been given to most of everybody that we've done, not, I mean, it's been explained.
Yeah, so, so the, the other choice is to revise the plan, and, but it has to be, you know, it can't, it has, you can't just resubmit the same plan. You have to wait two years if you want to resubmit the same plan. But you could revise the plan, and come back.
Is there any revisions that we could do that you would approve?
Again, we wouldn't say that, because that's, you'd have to, you'd have to revise it, and then bring it back to the board. The zoning board doesn't give advice on something like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can talk to Patrick during the week, and figure out which way you want to go.
You can speak to me, or you'll talk to the building commissioner?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda. Oh, board discussion. So, this is for the, over a year ago, we had a multifamily home at 549 Washington Street, and we granted a special permit for the, for the case, and the. They want an extension of time to take action on that. And they submitted, the reason was, this is in the letter. "Mr. Patrick, thank you for meeting with me today. As discussed, I would like to request that my special permit for 1549 Washington Street be extended for one year. The reason I have is, the reason for this is I have tenants who have children in the school system, and I would like to avoid an eviction, permits are attached." And that's from, it's from John Walsh. So, this is, do you guys, if, do people remember the case on, on Washington Street?
I do.
Yep.
So, what's people's thoughts on extending, extending the time for, what would it be, Patrick, one year, he's asking for one year?
He's asking for one year.
One-year extension.
Yeah, in his letter, I mean, he basically says it out, I think he still has tenants that are in that building, that he wants to renovate, so he wants to wait till they at least give him time.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
What's the date that it would run out?
At the end of the year, I think, for the last one.
But what's, yeah, I mean, is it running out this month, the next month?
He's got some time, let me just check. So it'd be June of '25?
What was it?
It'd be June 16th of 2025.
It's the end of school year.
Okay.
So, it's the end of the school year, like you said, if you want a little more time to, that's, that's, I think that's what he's looking for.
So right now, it would end in June?
It would end.
So he's looking to go to June of '26?
Yes.
Okay.
Or. Can we extend it beyond that, or do we just give an extension from today's date?
I would do the year based upon when the date, the decision was filed, not a year from today.
From, from.
June, yeah, I would do June 16th, 2026.
Okay, can we do that? I'm not sure we can.
That's what he's asking for.
I know what he's asking for, but he's asking for a year, year's extension. Normally, a year's extension is from the time.
Of the, of today.
Of today.
Real time.
So he's asking for.
Seems a little early for him to ask.
I have a question, though, have we ever done this?
Yeah, I've done it, not, yeah.
Been closer to the date of when it would expire.
Exactly.
But there's nothing that says he can't ask for it this early.
Yeah, nothing says he can't ask for it, but I, I just, it, it, procedurally, I think, I've got no problem granting it from today's date, a year out. I don't see how we can grant something, you know.
A year out from a year out?
A year out from, yeah.
Because they're basically right after it. Is there, is there any, typically, what I would have seen in the past, like you would have to request an extension within 60 days of it expiring? There's nothing in our language that's really said you can ask any time you want.
You can ask any time, I wasn't uncomfortable with that. I just thought we were gonna give an extension from today's date. Which, which still accomplishes what he, what he wants.
Can we do two years from today's date? Does that get, that gets in past, is that, '26, you want it June 26th, right?
That's actually a good idea. Because all he's asking for is an extension of time, but can we?
He's asking for a one-year extension, so I would only give.
I think we might be overcomplicating it. I think we just consider a one-year extension from June 16th, 2025, to June 16th, 2026. That's what's on the table, right?
Okay, maybe I overcomplicated.
I'm not, I wasn't, I didn't mean that, like.
So, I guess, I know, the word precedent comes up in my mind, because somebody might come in and say, "Well, I didn't get the right bank financing, I need a little more time, can I have an extension?" So what are we gonna start using as reasons to give people extensions? The developer had a property that was occupied by tenants. Not new tenants, apparently, tenants, that they've been there a while. You know, they, they may have been given notice that the property's been sold. So, is it our fault they have, you know, great, I would like to avoid an eviction too, but you give a tenant notice, you give him time, we're gonna grant an extension on, like, looking into the crystal ball, how do we know this tenant couldn't find, or isn't in this process of finding another place to live inside the school district? I, you know, oftentimes, I'm told not to play god, but I mean.
Are you saying if they move out earlier? I'm confused.
If they move out earlier.
Then he can just start construction now, I mean, that's just the time.
Then he doesn't need this extension right now.
Don't know, though.
Yeah, he may, the applicant could not care to start the project till then, right?
I don't know.
I.
I, I feel like it's a reasonable requ-, I mean, if in fact true, he wants to give tenants the time to have their kids finish out school, if that's true, I feel like that's pretty reasonable.
Right, again, that's, that's extremely reasonable, and what I'm looking at is, that, if we do it from today's date, then the school year's over, and we're already into the new school year, so I think, I think we get around that problem. It goes back to what I was saying, how can we, how can we extend it?
But if we do it from today's date, is he just gonna come back next September, 2025, and request another year, because it doesn't get him into 2026, which is what he's asking for now?
What are we concerned about with him to? We don't know.
Slow-playing this?
No, no.
Why wouldn't you want to start as soon as he could? If it expires June 16th, 2025, it's a one-year extension to 2026. If we give him a one year now, it'll be till September 2025. Which, in theory, based on how I see it now, he would then come back and say, "Okay, no, I need from September to June 26th."
What, school year's over?
It's not clear, he's asking for a year, if you give a year, it's a year that it was filed, not a year.
But it's two, it's rarely what he's asking for, it's two school years.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's two school years, it's this entire school year, and all of next school year.
Is it crazy to think that the applicant could come in and explain what he wants?
Well, that's what I was just gonna say. I guess that's what I was gonna just suggest, but, it is much easier, because right now.
We're guessing.
Okay, you know what?
And to me.
Let's get a table discussion.
Table discussion, we, we don't need to, it's, we can table the discussion, we can get clarification, what's the applicant? the applicant, what's the person asking for, and then we can go from, we can go from there. But we don't have to, it doesn't, it's...
Well, I look at it this way, he's not, they're not here, they don't care that much what they, what we do. So we could just say motion to deny right now. I might do that.
Well...
This decision is going until June 16th, 2025, they have plenty of time.
And it's board business, there's no case number, we didn't open a case, so it's not like we're going to deny anything, we're going to get some clarification from the applicant.
They should have been here.
Okay. Next one, we have minutes, and I miss Bob very much, there's just a couple, couple things on the minutes. And did anybody have any typos or corrections that they wanted? On page two, fourth paragraph, it just says attorney, I think it needed to say Attorney Pucci. Page five, it says Ms. Conroy State in the butter, I think it should be stated. I want to just give these to you, Lauren. And that's all I had on the minutes, everything else looked good. Does anybody have anything else on the minutes? Does somebody want to make a motion to...
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it common for the, do we have executive session minutes here too?
They weren't submitted here.
All right, so I didn't know if I should abstain, that's all. You went into executive session.
All I would have been for October.
All right, no, so, you know, I didn't see them here, I just wanted to make sure I'm not voting on executive session minutes that I wasn't present at, okay?
They would be, they'd be in a separate session.
Separate for, okay.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2024?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dave, second by Drew. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, okay. Good night, everybody. Motion to, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Judy. Second by Drew. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.